Okay, we have all five present here for our forum. So I'm Ken Swan and I'm the vice chair of the. Sorry, I'm getting feedback in my ear to live this thing on. Okay. Welcome to the next meeting of the Southern Board of Appeals. We'll start by taking attendance. So we'll call the ball, Mr. Delisle, here. Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Mr. Shagan.
Here.
Mr. Scow.
Here.
And I, Ken Swan, am here. So that's five. We will be the five voting members on all topics tonight. Which gets us to the first topic, which is 14. Understanding made up any requests.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Lisa Neigh, Telling, Coste, on behalf of the applicant, as they request to continue us to the January 9th meeting.
All right, a request has been made to continue this until January 9th. Does anybody make a motion?
I will move the request for continuance to January 9th, March 24th, for 14 Payson Street. Application for special permit for nonconformities. The NC 23, 2015.
All seconded. All right, it's been moved and seconded. It was seconded by Mr. Delisle. By the way, our notetaker is not feeling well tonight. She's listening in via electronic system here. So anyway, so moved and seconded. Start your discussion. Seeing none. Through the roll, Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Mr. Shagan.
Yes.
Mr. Scow.
Yes.
And I go, yes. It's unanimous, 5-0. That gets us to our next topic, which is the hearing for 443 Merrimack. And we start by giving the applicant a chance to present it. Then we'll have public comment and then the board will ask its questions. So we'll start through, you have the floor, Attorney P.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Lisa Neigh, Telling, Coste, 30 Green Street, a new report. On behalf of ONG Development LLC, who are the owners of the property. And with me this evening is Eileen Graff, who is the architect on the project as well. And my colleague, Ben Taylor, who has also worked on this project. The property is at 443 Merrimack Street in the R2 zoning district. This is at the corner of Plummer and Merrimack. It's the eastern corner of Plummer and Merrimack. The applicant proposes to remove an existing one-story rear addition, or actually there are two different additions in the rear. And construct a new addition to the rear of the structure. Opposite Merrimack Street, that rear, so to speak, the natural rear as opposed to the zoning ordinance rear. As well as construct a compliant accessory garage structure on the property. There is currently a single-family home, which will be also a single-family home when the project is completed. There is no Form B for this structure, nor is the structure in the district data sheets. According to the assessor's record, the structure was constructed around 1850. And according to the information we found in the registry of deeds, it looks like between 1840 and 1878. Because the left rear addition appeared to be older and closer to original to the structure. And because we're proposing to remove it, we did go to the Historic Commission for demolition review. The Historic Commission released the, approved the plans and released the demolition delay. Which allowed us to come to the floor this evening. This is a corner lot in the primary front yard is that, which is on Plummer Avenue. And the secondary front yard is on Merrimack Street. Before I review the nonconformities, I just want to point out and acknowledge that prior to this meeting. Couple of weeks ago, we received comments from one of the abutters, the abutter up on Plummer. They had a disagreement related to the property line between the two properties. Our surveyor went back out and determined, found more monumentation. And it also on Plummer as well as up across from the adjacent property. And there was a revision closer to, but not quite exactly, of what that abutter thought that the line was. So we did submit revised plans and a revised matrix to the board that reflects that. As a result of that, and not as a result of that, but in recognition of that. The lot area for this property is 7,116 square feet where 10,000 square feet are required. The primary front yard setback is 16.4 feet where 25 feet is required. Secondary front yard setback is 8.8 where 25 feet is required. And the rear yard setback, that's opposite Plummer, is 6.5 where 25 is required. And as I said, the applicant proposes to remove the two additions on the rear. If you could go to the next slide, please. And I also indicated there was a roofline change. We received the approval for that. Because this addition is more than 500 square feet, we are here to seek a special permit for nonconformities from the board. If you could go to the next slide, please. So if, on this slide, you orient yourself, the bottom of the slide is Merrimack Street. And running up along the right side of the property or the westerly side of the property is Plummer. The proposed new addition is in the peachish color. You can see the existing rear additions in the back that are proposed to be removed. One of them extends beyond the main box of the existing structure. So you can see that the proposed addition, Eileen will go over this, steps in from the corners on the back. And then you can see the proposed garage to the rear, or the side, if you will, of the structure. You go to the next slide, please. So we took some photographs. This is a closer view from Merrimack Street. You can see that addition in the rear that's going to be removed. It sticks out from the side. Nothing on this front changes. Eileen will go over that on the proposed conditions. Next slide, please. And here is across the street on Merrimack Street. Same view, just a little further away. Next slide, please. And directly across the street on Merrimack, next slide. And then this is looking at the base of Plummer, looking towards the southeast. Next slide, please. And then up Plummer, next slide. And then this is directly across the street on Plummer. And you can see the other part of that rear addition is proposed to be removed. Next slide, please. And then this is the rear where those additions are. And the new additions proposed to be constructed. Next slide, please. And here's the backyard. Eileen will go into the details a little bit more about why that addition needs to be removed, but the Historic Commission agreed with that. Next slide, please. Excuse me, and then a little bit further in the rear, it's a pretty deep lot. Next slide, please. And this is further back in the rear. And with that alternative, I need to go to the architectural drawings.
It's 124, October 9th, January 9th. High Street.
I'm sorry.
I'm trying to interrupt.
Yeah.
That's the late.
That's later in tonight's agenda.
Okay, sorry. Try to interrupt that project.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. So the photographs will be helpful, hopefully, for you to see the original structure. So really, when we approached this project, design-wise, we really wanted to preserve that original structure. It's simple form. It's only 15 feet wide, simple gable, essentially two rooms, two rooms wide and then two above. So with that, our addition wants to be respectful of this form. And what you can see on the top left, again, existing is on the top two drawings, top of the drawing, and then proposed is on the bottom. So if you look to the top left, that's existing front elevation facing Merrimack Street. And you can see that one-story addition to the left of it. On the bottom left is the proposed, again, no changes other than adding a window in the center, but otherwise staying intact. You know, it has, it has good form and it just needs a little sort of care. It's been, it's been neglected for, for quite a few years. And so the idea is to, is to really sort of bring it back and let it shine again. Top right drawing shows the gable at simple gable form. Again, that back left. Or I'll say, opposite from the Merrimack Street side, is the one-story additions that you see there. Those additions, some, some were older in its existence. It houses the kitchen. There's a lot of structural reasons why we wanted to preserve it, to remove it, excuse me. We did have a structural engineer come and help us analyze whether it could be saved. And really, there's not much to save. Lots of rot, poor foundation, some are framing members. Many reasons. So with the removal of that allows us to put back an addition on, on the upward side of the house. And then if we could just slide to the next set of drawing, thank you. So what I want to point out in the top left here is the, is that whole one-story aspect that's being removed. We're looking from the uphill side of Plummer and looking to the backside. And what I want to point out on the bottom left is that our addition primarily is taking that simple gable form. And, and adding it on the rear. But being mindful from the, of the original structure and also acknowledging and, and its location on a corner. That it was important to turn the corner with something, with the form that was strong but not overwhelmed. So what you can see is at the, at the first floor level, we actually stepped the addition, the footprint, back from the corner. One foot six, but then at the second level, it actually steps back more than that. At four foot three, in order to really pull away from that corner gable end. And so that's where you'll see on that bottom of drawing, that gable. And then with a one-story shed piece wrapping the plumber side and up the, and then across the rear. To the right of that, as far as a roof form, we have a, I'll say flat, but there is a pitch to it. Where we didn't want to overwhelm the, the existing roof. So we just, in a way to sort of be more discreet and, and less, less of a presence. We have a very, very shallow pitch on that addition. On the right side plane of that addition, it also steps back from the original form. So again, trying to give respect to the original structure. Another thing to note is that these additions are only of the first and second story. We did not attempt to go to third story or occupy any of that. What I do think that does is helps minimize and keep rooflines as low as they are right now by not adding dormers, et cetera. So yet again, an effort to keep the, the simple form at its purest. And then if we go one more slide, just to touch on the, in the, in the uphill side of the property, we've got a detached garage. And that is a 24, excuse me, 22 by 23 of footprint. With a little bit of, of space above it, which is what you see as the staircase leading up on that, on that rear exterior. And this, this meets all the requirements for a accessory. Unit and. And then if we could actually touch on materials on this, which are going to be similar, and we can flip back to one slide back, just to touch on materials. You know, the proposal of the existing house is flabbered. We're going to replace the windows with a high-quality. Insulated window. We're going to match the two over twos where they are. And there are some small ones up in the gable ends that we will also replace. And then likewise on the addition, same level of high-quality windows. There's a combination of flabberes on the original house. And then on the rear addition, flabbers and shingles, just to differentiate the added new construction piece. Generally speaking, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a small increase. It is over 500 addition of square feet. It's actually 900. Current house is about 1,400 square feet and we're simply going up to 2,300 approximately. Remaining as a single family and, and hopefully giving it, you know, this house has really. Needed a little bit of attention. And I, I think that this addition is a really. Nice way to bring it up to, to give it the love that it needs. And I have spoken with some neighbors, actually, I'll let Lisa touch on that, but some neighbors who are in support of it as well. And with that, I'll let Lisa over her presentation again.
And I just want to clarify, when Eileen says accessory unit, she means accessory building. It's not, there's not an accessory living unit in the back. Given all the discussion recently about that. So here's also a rendering that we've had done as well. So you can see, I think that this, particularly the flat drawings are a little more difficult. And the Historic Commission really appreciated the renderings that we have here and in the next slide. Because you can actually see how that lower addition in the back steps in. And there's that one story that's part of the two-story L in the back. And then the next slide. And again, here is looking up Plummer on the left without the proposed improvements. And then looking up Plummer on the right with the proposed improvements. Also, I would mention, and many of you probably drove by, Plummer has an elevation change. This leads you go up off the Merrimack Street. So particularly when you're coming down Plummer. Given the height of the houses that are adjacent and the, stripped down, it's difficult to see on the back of the house. So the board has the authority to grant a special permit based upon review of two criteria. One is that there are no new nonconformities. And two is that the proposed changes are not substantial or detrimental to the neighborhood. Here, there are no new nonconformities being created. There is the extension of that rear yard, but not to the same extent that the existing one does, as, as well as the front yard. If you could just go back up to the mind maps, Caitlin. So I thought it would be good to get an overview of this lot from the GIS. Directly across the street from this is a commercial structure. Many of you, been here a while, know that used to be a church and is now a daycare facility. And then you have an eclectic mix of different kinds of architecture throughout the area. But I, I thought that this was important, so you could get an idea of where this stood. So the next is, as I said, the board can find that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And as I indicated, that the neighborhood is a mixture of building types and uses. We've got the daycare facility across the street. Moving up Plummer on the same side, you have a converted ranch home, which is more than 60 feet, four feet from the rear of the proposed addition. And 19 feet from the proposed garage, where the ordinance actually allows six. Further, as you know, when traveling up Plummer, the elevation increases, as I indicated. Which helps to put into place, if you will, where this home is as compared to everything else. The homes across the street on Merrimack Street will not see a change, given the original historic structure will not be changing. Except for they will see that that addition that sticks out on the side no longer will be there. So they'll see the historic box itself. Again, they, there are capes, New Englanders, Colonials. There's a great mix of architectural styles in the neighborhood. Keeping all that in mind, as Eileen described to you. The proposed L has stepped in from the existing west side of the original structure and separated by a lower flat roof of the proposed addition. The design, the design allows for recognition and coordination to the original structure. And successfully does not interfere with this view from Merrimack Street. And it is, it's massing, is appropriate to the original structure on Plummer Avenue. I think there were some comments from the Historic Commission related to that, actually. That the width of the new L on the back is the same width as the gable is of the original structure. And they appreciated that architectural detail. There's respect for the corner boards and the rakes and roof lines that can be seen on the proposed addition. Removing the haphazard nature of the existing two additions certainly will improve the area as well. And I noted the, you can see the relationship between the surrounding properties based upon the renderings that we provided. As a result, we believe the board can find that proposed addition is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure.
Thank you, Attorney P. Okay, now we turn to the public comment period, or anybody who would like to in the room. Provide any comments. We'd love to hear them. Would anybody like the same thing on behalf of this board con or whatever, this application? Okay, seeing none. We're still taking input online. Do we have anybody out there who would like to provide input? You do, so. I see a hand there. So we will recognize the applicant. I mean, the first name, I'm not sure. I wanted to pronounce. But if you could indicate, if you could turn on your mic, we'll turn you on from here. If you could indicate your name and your address, and then you have the floor.
Hello, my name is John Bliler, 3 Plummer Avenue. The 1854 Cape, not, not a ranch immediately abutting the property.
Thank, thank you. We hear you loud and clear.
Good, thank you. I wanted to, to weigh in and ask a question or two, if I may, with regard to the updated site plan. So I'm going to weigh in and say, you know, as, as an immediate abutter, we appreciate the relatively modest scale of, of the. Addition, Eileen, that you've drawn up. Thank you. And we also appreciate your submitting a revised plan relative to some current concerns that we raised on, on the, the existing site plan. So thank you. So I'm looking at, at the revised site plan. I don't know, it's, it's the very last page of the document entitled 443 Merrimack Street Updated Package that was included. And I have a question or two on that plan, if I may.
I'm wondering if Caitlin, if you could put that up so we could see it while you're asking your question. And I should, I should indicate, by the way, this is not really a question-answer session. You can ask all the questions you want. But then we go to the next public speaker and. It's not that we're going to ignore your questions. What will happen, generally speaking, is when we get to our board, our board member will ask your questions for you. So you'll get your questions asked, but that's just the format we do this in.
So would you like me to articulate the questions now?
Yes.
Okay, good. So again, I appreciate the updated plan. Thank you. There are two notes on, on the, the figure that I don't understand. One says eight square feet gap. That's off on the easterly corner of the property. Upper left-hand corner is depicted on the screen. And then there's another note that says 19 square foot overlap. I'd like a, like to understand what those two notes refer to. When it comes to the Q and A period. And the second question I have is, you know, we have a certified plot plan for our property. It still differs for what we're seeing here relative to the set pack from our property. To the south and the property line. It shows less, this plan essentially shows that we have a little less property than our certified plot plan shows. That may not be relevant to the board in terms of, you know, setbacks and whatnot. I understand, you know, the, the garage's 19.3 feet. But it differs still from our certified plot plan. And then lastly, just a minor note, our names are, are wrong. Just off the top of the plan here, the names are, are incorrect. If we want to have a correct filing. So a couple of questions. What does that eight-square-foot gap refer to? What does the 19-square-foot overlap refer to? And does it matter that my certified plot plan has a different setback than this plan depicts? Thank you very much.
If I could just follow up with a question back to you, on your third point, or yours is, is different. Is it just inches or is it like 10 feet different? Or do you have a feel for how different it might be?
Yeah, so if you're looking at the, the north westerly corner of my property, it shows a six-foot, seven-inch setback here. My as-built shows a seven foot and a half, 7.5 setback. So again, I don't know if it's material for the purpose of this board, but in turn, you know, it, it. I'm losing property as a result of this map is how it appears, right? Or as a result of this drawing.
Okay, well, thank you. And hopefully we'll get some answers to your questions here in a moment.
I appreciate, I appreciate your entertaining me. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else out there, Caitlin, who would like to be recognized? If there is, raise your hand. Just a little button to raise your hand. At the bottom of your screen. Okay, seeing none. We shall close that portion of the hearing and go to questions from the board. And this is when each member of the board can ask whatever questions they might. So when this is whatever board or someone would like to speak, who would like to go first?
I'll, I'll go first here. I'll, I'll just reiterate the Mr. Bliler's question. Could you, Attorney P, explain the eight-foot gap and the 19-square-foot overlap? Or? What do you have to say about those things?
Thank you. Not being the engineer, how that arrived, they arrived at that, I can't speak to that. But what he's representing here is the solid line is the line that he has drawn as the lot line. And the hash line is the line that is, I believe, from the plan from Mr. Bliler. I apologize.
If I can just interject, when you say he, you mean your engineer?
I'm sorry, our engineer. Yeah, I apologize. And so the eight-square-foot gap on the, on the left hand or their east side is. In, you know, that's an eight-square-foot gap that goes in one direction. And then the 19-square-foot overlap in the other direction is that amount that it, it goes in the opposite direction. But that's a discrepancy between the two plans. And as noted, it doesn't change the actual setbacks.
Thank you very much. I, I don't, I don't think that the, the second question that the caller raised really is something for us. You know, whether it were his rights, I don't think that that's really our, our daily wish there. Going on beyond that. And my, my question I had was, I think, probably best answered by Ms. Graff. I was wondering about the status of the chimneys in the existing part of the house to be, that we have.
Well, thank you for bringing that up. So the original two, there's one on the gable end on the easterly side. Seen in this photograph on the far right. So that one actually is to be removed. In, in thinking about the evolution of it, it does appear that it was a later addition. And you could sort of, you feel that from the interior point of view, and in particular, actually, probably a gable on view, you would even see it. The chimney goes right in front of that awning window. The chimney to the left, which is leaning, we'd like to repair that one. And so that will remain in some form, but currently it has some structural instability. So we'd like to keep that in some form, but just something that will be secured.
Yeah, understood. Okay, so, so the gable, the gable end one goes away. And then the one in the middle will remain in some form or fashion. So, so that sort of. Landscape or streetscape will remain intact. Yeah. Okay, and then the last question I had were related to the exterior stairs on the, on the garage. Does that impact any way the calculations for the garage with respect to? Because you, you're kind of close to the, to what you can do without any sort of additional permit. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I can answer that. It doesn't, because they're not covered, so it doesn't count as the square footage for the inside. And it's, doesn't, the setback is too far away. Plus, it's an egress.
Okay, okay, yeah. That's it for questions from me.
Does anybody else have any questions? I'll go.
Yeah, I'll go. I'm assuming you saw, you've seen the two conditions they might want to add to this. One of them, they have to do with curb cuts. One of, one of them is the curb cut on Merrimack would be replaced or restored. And then if you do put one on Plummer, I assume you will, it can't be more than 18 feet.
So we corrected that, we, we made those changes, so thank you for bringing that up. Could you go back to the site plan, please, Caitlin? So Eileen met the DPW folks out there, and they wanted the, they wanted, so you'll see how it next down to the street? The driveway, and then the curb cut on Merrimack goes back.
Is gone, okay. Alright, so if we put those two positions, that's good. And I guess tree inside one, although it applies, they said that nothing has to be done. So there'll be no requirement there. I've got no other questions. Vice Chair.
Okay. Mr. Bennet, Miss Cal, do you have anything?
I have no questions.
All right, so that concludes our question-answer period. Actually, no, I get to ask questions, I forget, don't use your chair this late. I just want to make sure we close the week with our, the abouter who asked those questions. I, I think you indicated you have a different plan, I'm kind of glad to see this plan actually tries to show both. But from our perspective, you know, you have an issue with them as to the plan, and you guys got to work that out somehow, it doesn't really affect what we're doing, because the difference is so small that, you know, it doesn't matter who's right here, it doesn't really affect the setbacks and the things that were, you know, that garage, for example, is still a conforming structure either way. So it's not something we really deal with here. I just want to try to add that to to what's already been said. And I had some other things, but they've already been brought up by my colleagues, so that will now close discussion period. And now we go around the table, and everybody indicates if this is something they can support and, or not. And this requires a, at least a form of, well, who would like to begin?
I'll go, sure. You know, at first blush, I thought the addition was large. But when you look at how modest the existing structure is at, what was it, fourteen hundred square feet? And it's only a nine-hundred-foot addition, to put it at twenty-three hundred, that's not a big home. And if you look at some of the homes in that area, there are homes bigger than twenty-three hundred feet all over the place. So I, at first, I was a little concerned about massing, but seeing the pictures, seeing drawings, I think it's well-in keeping with the neighborhood, I don't think it's more detrimental. And again, kudos to the architect, beautiful building, beautiful addition, so I can support the application.
Who would like to come next?
Well, I echo those comments, and I also would note that we also satisfied the first prong here, where is there's no additional new nonconformity here. So with that, I can support this.
Thank you for adding that. It is good to state the reason for making your decision. Mr. Blyler, Mr. Bennet?
I'll briefly, I'll go ahead, thanks. I'll just echo my colleagues. Observations, I would endorse the, the architecture here, and compliments the historic structure and respects the historic nature of the building, it is tasteful, and indeed, this building is quite tired, and it's a it's a true benefit to see this level of improvement. Like Mr. Shagnon, nine hundred feet on its, on its face, sounds like a large addition, but the total side of this building is about twenty-three hundred feet, and the lot's quite good, again, the scale and massing on the lot is certainly comfortable, and the scale and size and messing with the structure as it relates to the neighborhood is perfectly comfortable and compatible with the neighborhood, so I can approve this, and I compliment the team that put the application together.
Thank you, Mr. Blyler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would echo the comments of my colleagues, I think this is a nice plan, no new nonconformity, and nothing that's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, so I, I can certainly support this.
And I concur with my colleagues as well. So that will entertain motion?
I'll make a motion to approve four forty-three Merrimack, ZNC twenty-three dash twenty-eight. With the two, I guess there's stipulations. Special conditions. That the curb cut on Plumber Ave not exceed eighteen feet. And said improvements would be completed prior to the building permit being closed out, and that the curb cut on Merrimack will be, on the driveway curb cut, will be restored, and again, that'll be completed prior to the building permit closing.
Thank you.
Part of the building permit or occupancy permit?
It says building permit close out.
Oh, building permit close out.
Close out, so that's when it's all signed on, right?
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Bennet? Okay, thank you. With that, we'll call a roll. Mr. Blyler?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yeah.
Mr. Shagnon?
Yeah.
Miss Cal?
Yes.
And I'm yes, it's five, it's approved. That gets us to our second topic, which is our Porton Street, those are even going to one twenty-five, I'm sorry, it's the last topic. So, one R Porton Street.
Mr. Chair, for the record, we sit me, the Tellerman Crossbein, thirty-third Street, on behalf of Matthew and Kaylee Withington. And with me this evening is Ben, who also worked on the project. And MPG Design are the architects on this project, they weren't able to make it this evening. So the applicant, the Withingtons proposed to construct a one-story addition on the left side of their existing two-unit condominium structure. While this might seem like a lot of work for a hundred and seventy-six square feet, it's really important to them being able to use and function in their home with their family. The project required a special permit for nonconformities due to the extension of the additional cause to the left-side setback. So this is a two-unit condominium where the Withingtons' unit is to the rear and left of the main structure, which you'll see in a little bit, it's actually set quite a ways back from Porton Street. The property is in the R-two and DCMD zoning districts. When this unit was actually constructed, it was at the time the R-three district, just so you all know how that all happened. I didn't do this, but it was done by Wright, apparently, at the time. The property contains a number of nonconformities, including the following. There's five thousand five hundred seventy square feet of lot area, where fifteen thousand square feet is required for a two-family. There's fifty-six feet of frontage, where a hundred and twenty feet is required. Front yard setback is two-point-four feet, that's of the original structure, which is the other unit, where twenty-five feet is required. The right-side setback is five feet, where twenty feet is required, that's on the opposite side as well. The left-side setback is nine-point-eight feet, that's where we're putting the addition, where twenty feet is required. And lot coverage is at thirty-point-five percent, where twenty-five percent is the max. The property conforms to rear yard setback and open space, so this lot is like many lots in the south that were all mostly R-three at one point in time. Presently, there is room for three parking spaces in the front of the building and kind of to the side that the, both of the owners use. And as I said before, Matt and Kaylee proposed to construct this one-story addition on the left-hand side of the house. The proposal will increase the left side nonconformity from nine-point-eight feet to one-point-eight feet, and the lot coverage from thirty-five, thirty-point-five percent to thirty-four-point-two percent. You go to the next slide, please. There will be no other, the nonconformities will be impacted by this addition. So as I said, they proposed to build a hundred and seventy-square-foot, seventy-six-square-foot addition, one-story on the left-hand side. And the DCOD isn't triggered, nor was demolition delay triggered. So you go to the next slide, please, if you could blow it up a little bit, thank you. And so here you see that two-and-a-half-story wood frame dwelling, that's the original dwelling. And then this addition was put on in the rear. And so this unit, one R, is the applicant's unit. And you can see the proposed addition in the kind of darker cross, the hash mark on the left-hand side. Next slide, please. So here you have the existing, and this is just the unit, the connection is off to the right. So you have the existing unit to the left, on the left-hand side. And then you can see the small addition proposed on the right-hand side. There are no other changes to the structure. This is the front view, next slide, please. And this is the left-side elevation where the proposed addition is to go. Currently, you can see they have their entry on the left side there, the proposal is to put this small addition in its place and have the entry at the front. Next slide, please. And here's the rear, again, no changes except for the addition on the right-hand side from the rear. And you can see how it matches with the existing structure, next slide, please. And then this is the opposite side, and of course, there are no changes to this side of the structure. Next slide, please. So here, we've stepped into the property a little bit, and you can see the condominium in the back. And the proposal is to put the addition on the left-hand side, next slide, please. Again, you can see a little bit further out, you can see there's a, currently a fence that runs along the property line there, Stockgate Fence. And that's where the addition is proposed to go, next slide, please. And this is going east on Horton Street, and obviously, you can't see existing structure at the corner of Federal and Porton, next slide. So as a result, the board has two-pronged test, one, that there's no new nonconformity, and two, that proposed changes will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. First, there is no new nonconformity being created. Next, the board can find, we believe that the proposed change will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. We believe the proposal of a hundred and seventy-six square feet is modest and less than substantial for sure. It is the left rear portion of the property, and very difficult to see through the street unless you're standing right in front of it. There's existing screening on this portion of the property due to the existing fence along the left-hand boundary, as I indicated earlier. And in order to get an additional space, there's really no other place on the lot for the Withingtons to add in addition. Also, as you can see from the next slide, if you go to the mind maps, please. As you can see, they're really adding this addition on the right-hand side does not do much to make this house any different from any other house in the immediate vicinity related to setbacks. There are many setbacks that are nonconforming too close to both sidelines, rear line and the front line, so it is not different in that way. In fact, you can see three to five Porton Street, sixty-one to sixty-three Federal, which is the second house in on Federal Street, seven to seven and a half Porton Street, many other houses on Portons and Federal Street in that general vicinity have reduced side yard setbacks. In fact, many of them appear larger than this structure in and of itself, even with the addition that both of the units taken into consideration. The use of the unit is not being intensified, it's still a two-family use. The other thing I thought was interesting is we did a comparison, if you could go to, I think I have a table towards the end of the yeah, go just down to the slides, that would be great. I did a simple comparison of lot area taken from the city's GIS system and lot coverage just by taking from the first-floor footprint from the city's GIS system. And I did a comparison of the surrounding properties. And so, in one and one R Porton Street, that's the applicant's property, the lot area is fifty-five hundred and seventy square feet. The building footprint with the addition is nineteen hundred and five square feet. And that is a thirty-four-point-two percent coverage on the lot coverage. Sixty-five Federal Street is lot area of three thousand seven hundred and ninety square feet with a footprint of one thousand four hundred and seventy-nine square feet, which makes lot coverage of thirty-nine percent, which is higher. Sixty-one to sixty-three Federal Street is four thousand eight hundred and thirty-five square feet. It has a building footprint of two thousand six hundred and eighty-four square feet, which has lot coverage of fifty-six percent. Fifty-nine Federal Street has five thousand seven hundred and six square feet of lot area in one thousand three hundred and ninety-five square foot building, that's twenty-three percent lot coverage. Three to five Porton next door has five thousand six hundred and nineteen square feet of area, two thousand one hundred square feet of a footprint, which is thirty-eight percent lot coverage. And then fifty-eight to sixty Prospect, which is on the other side, has five thousand four hundred and eighty-nine square feet of lot area, a footprint of two thousand two hundred and eight, which forty percent lot coverage. And so, it's certainly not the smallest at twenty-four percent, but then it's the next smallest as compared to the surrounding houses. And so, this is the south end, it's dense, that's what this is, adding this one hundred and seventy-six square feet certainly is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. In addition, I just want to point out, if you want to go up, there you go, to the next slide down, please. And so here are some of the adjacent structures, so here's three Porton, you can see how close that is, next slide. And then here's the Federal Street properties, not unfamiliar, many of you are familiar with that streetscape, next slide, please. Again, sixty-one to sixty-three Federal. Next slide, please, and this is sixty-five Federal right on the corner, that's the proposed structure in the rear. Next slide, please, and then that's the corner again. The applicants did get letters of support from the two units at sixty-five, that's what you're looking at right there. The three units at sixty-three, which are the ones directly behind where the proposed addition is supposed to go, five letters of support, and of course, the other unit owner of one Porton Street filed a letter of support. And with that, Mr. Chair, we request the board grant a special permit for nonconformities.
All right, thank you. So now we go to the public comment, but anybody in the room like to come to the podium and make any comments, pro con, or ask questions, or whatever? Okay, seeing none, do we have anybody online? If you're online and you want to comment, you have to now hit your raise hand button, and you'll be recognized, is there anyone? No? All right. So, we'll close the public comment period, and then we go to questions from the board, who would like to begin?
I'll go first, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Blyler.
Attorney Me, could you just go over the two, the critical nonconforming pieces here, the side yard setback and the
Lot coverage.
Yeah, lot coverage, I'm sorry, yes, thank you.
So, if you could just blow it up a little bit, Caitlin, so currently, the side yard on the left-hand side, as you look at this, is nine-point-eight, and the addition is proposed to be eight feet wide, and so that makes that side yard setback one-point-eight foot off the left side, so that's the increase in the nonconformity there. And then the other is lot coverage. So the hundred and seventy-six square feet added to the existing lot coverage, lot coverage goes from thirty-point-five percent to thirty-four-point-two percent.
And just one thing that I didn't really pick up from the presentation, and probably because you didn't have your architect here for this project, but the methods of construction, is this gonna have a foundation, or is it just like a slab-on-grade, or how would this, how would this be done?
I have to tell you, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if there's many slab-on grades around. Nobody's here to get into this question, so they may do a half foundation, but I, I just, I can't answer that question. I don't know if we can tell from the elevation, you can look at the elevation a minute.
Yeah, you can really pick it up.
Yeah, maybe the other one is, yeah, hold that. It looks like, it looks like there's a little bit of something there, so maybe it's a shallow one of the shallow foundations, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Those are the only questions I had.
All right, who'd like to go next?
I just have a few.
Great, Mr. Bennett.
I just want to make sure, would you say that the butter at 61, 63 Federal Street have weighed in in an affirmative fashion here?
Yes, there are three units there and they all signed letters of support.
And I appreciate your chart. And it's helped me. I have just another question for you. As you wandered through the neighborhood, I'm curious if there are any other parts where there's a 1.8-foot setback.
Well, Mr. Bennett, I didn't go out there. However, I will tell you that the property, can you shoot back? Do the photo from Horton Street, looking down the driveway. The old firehouse, that's the back of it right there. So it's pretty close to the property line. I don't think it's right on the property line, but it's pretty close to it.
Excuse me. That's the butter.
That's where the butter is.
That's 61, 63 Federal.
That's 65.
Me map shows that it actually overhangs.
Yeah, you know, you can't.
Front side of its own.
Yeah, you can't, you can't rely on the mind map right without a survey. So that's not to say it doesn't. I don't know, but I don't believe our survey shows it coming across. It's right on the edge. Yeah, see, it doesn't come across. It's right on the edge.
Yeah.
Could you go back to the picture with next, with the 65 Federal abutting? And that looks like a garage. Is that a garage next door with a?
It looks like a garage. I don't, I can't remember. Is it? Yeah. Maybe you can help, even though she's not here. There it is, there it is.
And I will speak to it only because I used to live there. Yes, that's a garage. And then above that is an open.
And I know this is an odd question, but approximately about the height of the proposed addition in comparison to the garage.
Any idea how? Can we go back to the elevation a minute? So it looks like it might be taller. And the only reason I say that is you see the existing windows. And if you go back to the photograph a minute again. So see that window? That window looks like it might be above where that garage top is. Right? See the relationship there?
Yes.
That's about as close as I can get as a comparison.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Shaggin.
Yeah, I think, you know, probably most of the people on the board, their biggest concern is the how tight sedition is going to be to the block right next to it, firehouse condos. Was any consideration given to putting the addition on the back of the building? Because you've got 27 feet of rear setback available. You asked the requirement's 25. You can put an eight-foot extension there and not go into it too much. Is there a reason it has to be on the left side?
Yeah. Because of the function of the house inside is my understanding.
All right, I see it's a tough one. That's 9.8 down to 1.8. And I know the south end is, okay, I lived there myself. Let's tell you. No other questions. Thank you.
Okay. I, I, I'm sorry. Just to follow up on Mr. Shaggin's question. Is the addition, have a landing area, entranceway? I mean, what's the purpose of it? What is it?
I think it's like, it's a mudroom and an extension of that kitchen.
So I just, if you were to put that in the back. I guess you really would.
It wouldn't, the purpose option as you are stating your function is. Okay.
All right, I have a question. Could you put the sideline up, please? There's something to follow on to Mr. Shaggin's question about, or else could you put this thing? If it's a mudroom for entry, why not throw the front? There's a shed there. Why get rid of the shed and put it there?
You lose parking.
How much parking is, no, there's a shed. You can't park in the shed. I mean.
Well, but the addition wouldn't be as small as the shed. And there's three parking spaces there. They're required to have four of them. So they're already non-conforming for parking. So they would lose parking.
I don't see how replacing a shed with that, with that mudroom costs, it would lose parking.
Because it would take up more space, right? So you have to, you'd go into that other parking area on the left-hand side. So there's two cars that go on the left-hand side and one car that goes on the right-hand side. And so if you put that in the front, you'd lose more space in the left. You wouldn't be able to park two cars on the left-hand side.
I see what you're saying.
There's a picture of the shed chair on one of the slides. If you want to see it. It's, it looks more like a coffin than a shed.
Yeah.
It's really small.
That one, the one.
There's even a better picture further down. Maybe it's on.
There you go.
There it is. There's a shed.
A box.
All right. I guess my other question is, I mean, the report last day. One of the zoning bodies had passed a few years ago when we did the month before. It was on your own land. You can't have two buildings. They have to at least be three feet apart. And some of that was for safety and proof. This building, at 1.8 feet off the line, and you have this other building there. So now I realize you don't fall into the situation because, you know, that's on some else's property. But the same safety concept, it's coming very, very close to an impenetrable wall there. For a wall. And that's just a concern. I don't know. And you give any consideration to the safety issue, it'd be so close.
I mean, from a building code point of view, that wall on this structure is going to have to be built a fire-resistant construction because of how close it is to the property line. So it's going to have to be built in that manner under the building code.
I realize that. I'm asking you to have a question, which is, you know, we just updated our zoning set up. On your own land, you can't have two buildings any closer than the three feet because the safety of getting between them. Here, I realize you don't fall into that constraint, right? Because, you know, the building's right over the line, but nevertheless, it falls into that safety concern.
Right. Well, you still can get around. It's all the same property. You can still get around on the other side of the house, right? So there's a, there's a five-foot area on the other side of the house. You can still go around to the back on the opposite side of the house.
All right. I have some concerns, but they're really not questions. So I will close my questions here and go to deliberations. So who would like to begin deliberations?
I'll take a stab. So I think this is one of the toughest ones that I think, from my perspective, has come around in a while for me. Because I, I appreciate the functionality of the proposed addition and the modest side of the proposed addition. But it's the, the location. The side yard setback and the lot coverage are really, really difficult here with this particular matter. So those are, those are the things that I'm concerned about. Otherwise, I mean. So yeah, so those are the things that I'm concerned about thinking about here. So I'll, I'll turn it over to other members to voice their, their thoughts.
I'll take a, I'll follow up. Stream of consciousness. I, I share Mr. Delisle's concerns. I think pretty obvious what we're focusing on here. There are no new non-conformities. Without the intensification to. I make a couple of observations. First, as Attorney Mead has observed. The homes here in this neighborhood, I mean, they're cozy is, is an understatement. Incredibly dense, probably is a better description. And I recognize that. And I think despite my desire to perhaps see more data regarding whether or not we've seen their side yard encroachments, which compared to this one, certainly the one next door. It's just that. Whether there are others, I'm not sure. However, certainly it wouldn't surprise me. There are, given the density of the way this neighborhood is structured. I can somewhat accept that. My final comment is that the addition in my setting does nothing to the structure. Adds a utilitarian aspect to that person and not particularly driven by its need or appeal. I think this, Mr. Delisle said, is a very close one. I think as I parse the standard here. I would find that it meets the requirements.
Shaggin, who would like to go next?
Yeah. I guess as I stated previously, my concern is still the tight side yard setback. I noticed in the report that when the house in the back was installed, it was an I-3 zoning district with a 10-foot side yard setback at the time. So they installed it at 1.8. Close enough. It just seems to me that the that was, you know, the driving point back then when they got a permit to put that building in, to keep it at 10 feet. And we're going all the way down to less than two. I mean, you can't walk, you can't walk between this building and the fence. It's that tight. So I, I, like others, I have a problem with 1.8 feet. That's, to me, that's really small. I understand the addition is quite modest and small. That's not the issue. It's just that at 1.8 feet, I mean, that was a problem.
Thank you. Mr. Cal.
I would echo those comments. I think if, if it makes it even harder, I guess, that the abutters don't disapprove of this. I mean, I, I'm very surprised that the 65 Federal Street abutters are, you know, agreed to this plan. Just given that corner between the two buildings is, you can't even get a lawnmower through there, right? So I don't know how you're going to, if there's a safety concern, how you're going to deal with that. I echo all those comments. I think it's a very difficult setback at 1.8 feet.
Thank you. I think I would add to that. I concur with a lot of the comments here. I mean, the fact that in the south end, many buildings way back when were built extremely close to lot lines. And that was before there was zoning. Part of the reason the zoning was put in was so that did not continue. And I have been on the board for several years now. I've never seen somebody want to encroach on a side yard setback anywhere near it this much. So I cannot support this application.
Mr. Chair, if I could.
Yes.
You just haven't seen this application yet. That's. No, I'm just about the 1.8 feet. So I have a question for the board. I hear three, four of you related to the 1.8 feet. I heard one comment related a little bit to the lot coverage, but not as much. I'm going to seek to continue this. But I do have a question related to the lot coverage. So if the 1.8 feet were not that, if we're a larger, or if the addition were somewhere else, I don't know that that can happen, given what they've already monitored. Is the lot coverage a non-starter as well?
I'll go first. I raise a lot of coverage. I guess it would be a non-starter. I mean, I don't want to give false hope because I did raise that. And it wasn't, it was, it was an issue for me, co-equal to the setback. So, so I would say, yes.
I guess my observation is your chart that's along the way and demonstrating that, I don't know what your lot coverage would be, but it would seem like it would be an easier sell to me than 1.8.
I agree. I think the lot coverage, I could, I could see past that. If the 1.8 wasn't the issue. Yes, it's, it's, it's worse. But I agree, living in the south end, but there are a lot of places that exceed 30%, a lot, and 40%. It wouldn't be a go-to hell issue for me.
I agree with that. I think it's definitely, given the modest size that we did in the lot coverage, it certainly as much as the 1.8.
And speaking for myself, to me, the the side yard change was, was so dominant in my mind that I didn't speak to the lot coverage. But I, I think I'm a little morally for Mr. Delisle is, I've been talking about lot coverage. I mean, it's a very dense neighborhood. People are concerned about infill in this neighborhood. And it's, lot coverage speaks to that. And yes, you can point to people who have built a lot of coverage 100 years ago. But we have zoning now. And part of it was to prevent, you know, seeing how much we could pack into this neighborhood. So I got to tell you, it's hard hypothetically to sit here and talk about things without seeing a plan.
Yep.
But, you know.
I appreciate that.
Maybe a modest amount. I don't know. But it's, it's. I do think coverage is important. I don't want to say it's not important when it comes to, it's a real measure of infill in a very dense neighborhood.
I agree. And that's why in something like this, it's important to talk to the neighbors, which have all supported the project, even at 1.8. But I appreciate that. So if I can seek continuance, Mr. Chair, to your January 9th meeting.
Would somebody like to make that motion?
Do we have room? Just?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you for that.
Well, no, I just didn't want to have six or seven.
I'll make the motion to continue the matter from one Gordon Street rear CNC 23-29 to the January 9, 2024.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been seconded. Any discussion? See none? Over on the road, Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Is this your, Bennett?
Yeah.
Mr. Shaggin?
Yes.
Mr. Cal?
Yes.
And all would, yes. It's bipartisan. It is continued.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. That gets us to Five Harbor. About Plum Island.
Mr. Chair.
You're back.
I'm back. For the record, like a bad penny. Lisa, meet me at 1000 Plaza 33rd Street on behalf of Lisa Nardone's trustee of Lisa Nardone Family Trust. With me this evening is Ryan Clemmons from my office, as well as Eileen Graff, who is the architect on the project. This project is at Five Harbor Street. Lisa and her partner Patrick proposed to renovate the single-family home by adding 295 square feet to the second floor and constructing a new shed. Go to the next slide, please. The property is located in the I-3 zoning district in the Plum Island overlay district and has the following non-conformities. Lot area is 8,430 or 12,000 are required. 55 feet of frontage or 120 feet are required. The right side yard setback is 4.6. The right side yard setback is 4.6 feet from the northwestern boundary where 25 feet or, excuse me, 20 feet is required. And I might add that the proposed shed would be compliant with accessory structural requirements of the ordinance. The property has two bedrooms and will go to three bedrooms, which is allowed by right under the ordinance. The home currently has 1,390 square feet of area and includes 16.5% FAR. Proposed renovation brings the home to 1,685 square feet. And then if you add a shed to that, which you have to, the FAR goes to 22.5%, still under the 25% maximum requirement. The project will not create any new non-conformities, and the property conforms to all other dimensional requirements. As Eileen will go through in a minute, if you go to the next slide, please. Lisa and Patrick propose to add dormers on both sides of the existing one and a half story gable. The exterior face of the dormer will align with the existing first floor wall. On the southwestern end of the gable is proposed to an extension, but only on the second floor. This extension will replace an existing second story balcony extending out over an existing deck. The north side facing the street, the project proposes a second story gable addition over an existing shed roof. The addition will have similar shed dormers that Eileen will also review. Because of those dormers, the new height changes slightly from 18 feet to 20.5, which is still well below requirement. And then, as I indicated earlier, the proposal is also build an 18 by 12 foot shed in six and a half feet of the boundary line, which is compliant, and it will be constructed in accordance to wetlands regulations and lifted on the sand. If you go to the next slide, please. Let me blow that up just a little bit. So Harbor Street is the right, and you can see the, the peach color is kind of the second floor changes that Eileen will review. Kind of hash underneath is the existing structure. The proposed shed is the peach at the bottom. You can see the non-conforming front corner of the house at the top. And then while that is being extended a little bit because the extension on the second floor, it's not being extended to the same extent as the existing non-conformity of that front corner. And if you go to the next slide, please. So here's currently the, the front of Five Harbor. And next slide. And here's the back, front angle of it. Next slide. And here's our easterly side of the structure. Next slide. And the side, the easterly detail, you can see, well, Eileen's going to talk a little bit about what's going to happen here. Next slide, please. And here's the rear of the structure. And that, you can see that balcony on the top. That's where that second floor addition is going to come out over. Next slide, please. Again, this is another shot of the, of the rear. Next slide, please. Again, just a little bit different angle on it. And then next slide, please. And here's the west side of the structure. And then I'm going to turn it over to Eileen to go with our.
Evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So as, as Lisa has outlined, I'll try to walk through some of these changes that are being proposed, but to simplify what we're trying to achieve here is that the one and a half stories, the, the second floor is compromised in ceiling height. So we're trying to introduce some ceiling height by way of dormers. So if you consider this main gable that you're seeing from the front elevation there, we're proposing dormer, shed dormers on both sides. And the ridge itself does not change. That will remain intact, but it's simply the building height changed because we are including the new roof of the shed dormer. So that's why that increased. But, but again, to reiterate, the ridge line does not change. And then if you see that shed piece, that one-story piece on the left side, we're actually going to extend the wood, the, the wall height there just to create another gable perpendicular to the gable that you see there. So with that, thank you for pausing on this, on this photograph, but I figured it'd be helpful to, to talk about it with a sort of 3D aspect. So if we could just slide to drawings, I can point out these new changes. So again, front elevation is the top left existing. And then if we look at the bottom left for the proposed, here's where you'll see on the top right corner of that, of that drawing, one shed dormer that's following the west side of the property. So and then on the left side of that gable, now you can see how we extended the front plane above that shed piece to create a gable end perpendicular to the original gable. And if you look to the bottom right drawing, you can see that gave perpendicular gable that's being introduced. And again, that takes the same character of these sheds that are on both sides of the gable. So another thing to note, as mentioned, on the second floor, there was an expansion on the basin side. So the original gable took over the space that existing balcony was and added it for a little bit more square footage, but it only happens on the second floor. So it goes over some existing deck space. So what you'll see on that bottom right drawing, there's just a hair more in extension on the top left, on the top left of that building. Also seen in that elevation is the, there's a, hard to see, but there's some vertical slat showing. We are moving an existing outdoor shower from the basin side to the side of the house. So that's what you're seeing in that deck rail in the area that's added on the easterly side of the house. But otherwise, that elevation is staying the same on the first level. You can see that sort of transom window, et cetera. So that all stays intact. On the first floor level, as I was mentioning, the first floor deck gets expanded in that easterly direction. And it, it was also important to sort of clean up the, I'll call it the procession beam from the, say, driveway side to the water side. There were, and, and we could go back to photographs and talk about that a little bit as well, but there are a lot of pavers and such that are, are, and retaining wall that are sort of failing. So in an attempt with this added deck was to sort of improve that kind of deterioration along the house and that sloping hillside. So that's what this expanded deck is also trying to achieve. And the next drawing with other views, here's the basin side on the top left existing. And then the same thing on the bottom left with the introduced dormers with the second story addition to the right of the original dormer over the existing shed. And then likewise here, you can see expanded first floor deck with the outdoor shower also moved to the, to the easterly side. And then lastly, the bottom right drawing shows you, oh, sorry. The, thank you, Caitlin. The, the bottom right drawing is probably the cleanest in seeing that second floor expansion. So again, top right drawing shows that existing second floor balcony. And on the bottom right drawing, you can see it expanding as living space to the second floor. And then now we can go to the shed drawing, which is a small little structure, 12 by 18, just to provide more storage needs. And that on the bottom right drawing is trying to convey what that will feel like on Harbor, Harbor with the two buildings adjacent to each other. So that's it in the smaller scale, just so you can read that together. Material wise, the, the front elevation that faces Harbor will all be in the wood clavoured. And then all the other sides of both structures are going to be shingles. You know, high-end windows as well, insulated well. And in keeping with what's, what's there now. So with that, I can answer any questions should they come along later, but at this point, I'll pass the presentation back to Lisa.
Thank you, Eileen. So with that, the board knows that, as we said before, the property interior area is currently 914 square feet on the first floor, 486 on the second floor, for a total of 1,390 square feet of all that in total. And then the proposed interior increase, increases the second floor by 295 square feet to take it up to 771 square feet on the second floor. Therefore, we look for a special permit under section 21G4 that the proposed changes will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or the pyod than the existing non-performing structure. And that the proposed changes cannot cause the structure to be within 10 feet of the side lot line, more than two stories or more than 35 feet in height. So as to the second item, that's clear from the dimensional table and everything you've seen, that we don't impact that whatsoever. As to the first, the proposed alteration is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or the pyod. First, this reminder substantially means to a great or significant extent. And when used in this context, we think that you can find that it does not greatly or significantly detract from the neighborhood or the pyod. The property's neighborhood consists generally of primarily one to three-story single-family homes along Harbor Street and Basin and the northern tip of Plum Island. But those homes are densely clustered, often featuring dormers themselves and occupy a larger portion of their lots. Here, the applicant's proposed work conforms to this neighborhood character. First, the applicant proposes to build this addition of dormers into the existing roof to match the size and capacity of the other Plum Island homes, including its direct neighbors. The current second floor provides little living area and as low sloping ceilings as Eileen described limit its enjoyment. I might say that one of the driving factors here is that Patrick is 6 feet 5 inches tall, which makes it very difficult for him to stand up in much of the second floor. The additional 295 square feet and additional head height will make a huge difference in that situation. Also, you know, the addition on the second floor goes over an existing deck, and it will be, be built in conformance with the requirements of the Wetlands Protection Act and FEMA. The proposed work fills the pyod by reducing damage to public and private property through floodwaters and ensuring public safety by meeting those construction requirements. The extended house and expanded deck all meet those construction requirements. Next slide, please. The, also based upon the reasonable increase in the modest floor area of the existing house, the outwornness proposal can't be found to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And as I said earlier, as the condition number two, all setbacks are beyond the 10 feet, except the pre-existing right side setback, which is not being extended to the same extent. So if you go to the next slide, please. So here is the, the mineout. We've outlined this lot. You can see it's a pretty good sized lot for Plum Island. And the house is actually relatively small, and we're staying within that same footprint, but for that little cantilever on the second floor. Next slide, please. And so here are some surrounding properties. 1176 Street. That's dormer on that kind of peak there. Next slide, please. Here's 1576 Street. Next slide. 33 Harbor, obviously much larger than what's being proposed. Next slide here. 19 to 21 Harbor, also in that same little block, also obviously much larger. Next slide, please. 45 Harbor, here's something more of a similar size. Next slide, please. 53 Harbor, again, much larger, but in the same neighborhood. Next slide, please. 1078 Street, larger, certainly in a different way. Next slide. 2056 Street, similar size proposal here as well as the proposal. And next slide, please. Is that it? So with that, we would request that the board provide a, or grant a special permit to allow these changes and modifications to the structure, as we believe it is not substantially more detrimental to the pyod or to the neighborhood, and that there is only the extension of the non-conformity along the, that one side. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Mead. Okay, this brings us to public comments area. Anybody in the room who would like to come into the microphone and make a comment, we'd love to hear from you. Seeing no takers? Oh, is there anybody online? There is. Somebody out there pushed the raise my hand button, but nobody is pushing the raise my hand button. So we will move on. And we'll take questions from the board who would like to begin.
Idris. I just wanted to go over how big the square foot into the building is. It looked, it looked like from reading just some of the numbers, because I don't think it's listed. The original building's 1390, and you're going to add 295 in that. So that's 1685.
Correct.
Does that sound right?
Yeah. I was trying to find my final number, but that's, yeah, 1685.
And the side yard setback, I guess it would be to the right side, looking from Harbor, is exist, the smallest, I guess, is existing 4.6 and the 5.8 back. That's not changing.
No.
Space is saying.
We, because that second floor is existing out over that deck.
Yeah.
We extend that just a little bit, but it's not to the same extent, because that goes away from that sideline there, right? See, it's kind of sits.
Yeah, to an angle. Yeah. That, that's all I have for questions. Thank you.
Would I ask?
I have no questions.
No questions? Is this either here or the other? If you have any questions?
I, I have no questions.
Okay. Do I have any questions? I will say, I went by the, this morning, sunny day, it was pretty spot, I'll tell you that. The, how about the butters? Do you have any? You don't, not commenting tonight, that's.
We don't have any comments tonight. We don't have butters because the Nardones are away. However, they were encouraged to come in here with something larger. So the butters seem to be fine.
All right. I don't have any other questions. So we now move to deliberations. Where each person indicates what they think about this, and please remember our two-pronged thing, so our notes keep regular records. Who would like to begin?
Delisle, I'll take a crack. I, I don't see any new non-conformity here. And with respect to some being substantially more detrimental to the pyod or to the neighborhood generally, I think that this plan, based on the generous lot size for Plum Island, that this plan would not have either of those two considerations. So for those reasons, I can support this.
I will agree. I appreciate the photographs which indicate the similar homes on Harbor Street, their size, et cetera, et cetera. So any concern regarding scale and a similar inconsistency with the neighborhood is addressed by that. And otherwise, I can, I can approve this application.
Shagun?
Yeah, I have to agree with the other members of the board. I think the increase is modest. It's a small home to begin with. A lot of the homes out there, the old camps were small, and the addition doesn't make it that much bigger. It's bigger than it, than it is, but it's, it's not large for the, for that lot size and that area. And it's very tastefully done. It's a nice, a nice change to their existing home. So with that said, I can, I can support the application.
Scalloway.
I would agree with all those comments and, and note that, you know, it does meet both prongs of the, of our test as well. So I'd be curious.
Okay, and I too, I concur with my colleagues. I just want to indicate on her photos, Attorney Mead, that you know, I think there's some bigger houses. There are also some very small houses, and I find it more compelling where you just take all the, about pictures of all the, but it's not like there could be coverage thing on the previous application. Anyway, having, setting that aside, I'm always thinking about the FAR. This thing, perhaps because of its large lot size, fits nicely to the FAR even including. Perhaps because of its large lot size, fits nicely to the FAR even including the judge, so to get FAR to support the nature of density. So uh I can support this application as well. So with that, I think we move to a motion. Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Fire Harbor Street, ZNC twenty-three dash what? Uh sorry, twenty-three dash third.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Scow. Uh we'll go around her vote, just to go out. Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
Mr. Shagnan?
Yes.
Ms. Scow?
Yes.
And I go here, six, five, to nothing. It passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And that gets us to um. Our last period, one twenty-four High Street.
I promise I put this, I'll leave.
So we'll leave.
Uh Mr. Chair, members of the board, for the record, Lisa Meadney, Teller and Post, thirty Green Street. And with me this evening is Eileen Raff, uh who's the architect on the project. And um Chris Horn of Memorial Development, who is the owner and applicant um of this property. As you indicated, this property is located at one twenty-four High Street. Um it is um a current mixed-use property. It's located in the R three zoning district and the DOD zoning district. Um there's currently five uh commercial units and two residential units in this structure. Um there's also an existing garage on the property. The applicant proposes to convert the structure from mixed-use, which is non-conforming and not actually allowed in the R three. To multifamily, four units of multifamily, which is allowed by special permit. Um we have gone to the Historic Commission for their first review of this, because this is in the DOD. The special permit granting authority is the Planning Board. So the Planning Board will um issue or hear our application for multifamily house special permit. In addition, because we are making some very modest changes to the structure itself. And proposing to construct the garage at the back and taking a piece of the the garage off, another garage off. Um we have to file for a DOD special permit, which requires uh the Historic Commission to provide feedback. Uh generally, when we went to the Historic Commission, they said that, and I believe you have this new report, that nothing that we were doing was. Uh altering the historic integrity of the structure. So if all these people get to review this, why are we here? Well, it's kind of a unique situation. We're here for several dimensional variances. Um and that is, um because it's. Non-conforming as a mixed-use structure that's not allowed in the R three, you look at the dimensions for the next closes. And um that's how you get the non-conformities. However, when you shift to multifamily in the R three, there are actually more intense requirements. Rather than the mixed-use. And so here, um under the R three, it has existing non-conformities for a mixed-use. A front setback of twelve-point-six feet or twenty feet are required. And a right-side setback of eight-point-two or ten feet are required. Those are the non-conformities if it were to stay mixed-use. However, when we propose the multifamily use, which is allowed in the R three by special permit. It requires twenty thousand square feet of area, where we have sixteen thousand five hundred and seventy-one. And it requires a hundred and twenty feet of frontage, where we have a hundred and sixteen point two. And interestingly, it requires a structure not to be taller than thirty-five feet. And our structure is thirty-six and a half feet tall. Mixed use is allowed to be forty feet tall in the B one, just so you know. So that's why we're here. Um so if you could go to the next slide, please. So here we are. Um if you could blow up the front a little bit, so I can give an idea. So. The structure, High Street is on the right. This is almost directly across from the Washington statue, okay? Um that's in the mound. So High Street is in the front. You have the existing structure. Um which the structure had fire in two thousand and one. And so when you see the rear photographs of this, you'll see that there are some kind of funky additions on the back, not additions, but stairways and. Decks and things like that. One of the things that Eileen is proposing to do is to close in one of those. Uh spiral staircases and decks in the back. That's that peach color you see? So that's the only change on the structure. There are some other ones that she's gonna go through related to an entry and a win, couple of windows. And then you see all the way at the back, um the proposed garage, which meets the requirements of an accessory structure. And then you see the existing garage in the middle that has this kind of funky addition on it that's proposed to be removed. So those are the only changes. On the exterior of the structure. Otherwise, it's all interior. Changing the commercial use out and then putting two more residential units in, so there will be four residential units in the property. Next slide, please. So I'm gonna credit, um I think, uh Realtors dot com for many of these photographs, because I couldn't do them better. So here's the front of the structure, uh largely stays intact. Um Eileen will tell you what's changing. Next slide, please. Um here's kind of an aerial view, so you can see that the lot is rather deep, but very oddly shaped. We'll talk about that in a minute. Next slide, please. And this is another aerial view. Next slide, please. And there's the back. So see all that stuff on the back? Um we believe that was probably added in two thousand and one, uh after the building burned. Uh next slide, please. Um and you can see those two decks on the right-hand side, and there's a spiral staircase that comes out of one. Part of that's gonna be um closed in. Um that's where the addition that Eileen was talking about coming in. Next slide, please. And there's the upcoming garage in the back. Next slide, please. And then here is closer up. Um there's some changes on this side I didn't talk about in a minute, related to egress. Next slide, please. There's that barn piece that's gonna come off. Next slide. And then this is across the street from the mound. And next slide. And then the one uh in front of the George Washington statue. So with that, I'm just gonna turn over Eileen, so you can see the what proposed changes are.
Give me some, um, leaving again. Um so if we actually, can we slide to the first line? Great. So as mentioned, the the main form, the main brick form is 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 having very minor changes to the front elevation. Um and this is actually happening just at the bottom, bottom left corner, if you're looking at the right. Uh drawing, and you can see at the at the ground level, there's a a window that's just getting enlarged. So there's a proposed uh window well there, just to enlarge that opening for egress purposes. Um and that's the only sort of opening that's been altered on the upper side. On the right side of that existing house and over to the sunroom that's on the right. Um on the right drawing, you could see a proposed staircase. Likewise, there's an egress happening on that on that uh easterly side. Um that I'll show on the next slide. I just wanna point it out from this, from the high street perspective. Um actually, if we can slide over one more, just to finish that comment about that stair. With, oh, sorry, one more. There we go. Okay. To finish that right-side comment about the stair added, if you look to the right drawing, to the left of the sunroom that exists. There is an existing opening that's going to convert to a door, a French door, just to access, there's this wonderful uh green space to the right. So that will be a direct um access point uh from the from that level to the to the garden. Um and then also on that same elevation is a uh lower-level um window well being proposed on the bottom left drawing as well. Um but from this vantage point in the far, far distance on the right side, you can see the addition that's being proposed. And this again is on the far side of the building, but I just wanna point it out on this elevation. Um as well, but I will uh slide up maybe two drawings. And just to 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 discuss that again. So. Um this is from the westerly side. This is the side that the driveway access point is into the back of the property. And right now, there exists on the back left, uh on the left drawing, on the back left side. Are two tiered decks and then a spiral down from it. So what we're proposing is. Uh enclosing that space and making living space out of that in sort of, I'll call it clutter for now, for ease. Um take away all that sort of spindly, spindliness and just add um three levels of living space. Um we actually propose to put it in um on on summer tubes. Um and post, um and mostly because in keeping, there is a, there are a couple of those down below and that will allow some natural light, but at the same rate. Um it's similar to, in keeping with the structure that was added on the left side of the rear, which we'll see on the next slide. Here we go, um from the rear, there's that three-story tower, if you will. And again, you could hear, you could see on the bottom of the that structure is going to be elevated on on posts. Um and in keeping with the sunroom that's still left, as well as that sort of bay-window structure. Um the wooden structure that we're proposing will take on the same siding as the existing wooden pieces of Claver. Um will will match the six over six windows to follow on the building. Um and it will stay below the existing main gate, against keeping clear of that uh fascia and e-line. Um and uh and staying uh away from the corner. That's another thing to note, is that. We are staying away from the corner of the brick building. Um so really, very hard. I I think if you if you pause a lot, if you're on the sidewalk of High Street. You could get glimmers of it, but very difficult to see past the chimney, as well as that textured corner of the brick facade. Um only other, I think, I think only other change is that there's a picture window right in the middle there. Um on the second, third, second floor, um and that's just changing to some some um French doors. Um but those are the only changes on the rear. Otherwise, the rest is intact. Um and then lastly, to uh. We talked about that one, and then the la- next slide is actually the proposed um uh detached garage on the rear of the property. Before one of three, and footprint, um with with two car rentals. And with that, um I will pass it back to Lisa to add that presentation.
Now, before I go into the stairs for the variance, if you could pop back up to the um site plan, Caitlin, if you don't mind. I will, I failed to point out one other thing. So um. You can see the gray area, um that's now the parking, excuse me, that's the proposed parking. And above you, you see white with lines. That was parking before. That's all gonna be turned into green space. Um so the parking is all gonna be pulled down. And then that area up the top is gonna be turned into green space. And so I just wanted to point that out and deal to do that earlier. So if you could go now past the architectural slides, that would be great. So in accordance with um section ten H six A, uh in order to get a variance, the outward needs to be up. So to show hardship relief to the sole condition, shape or to part of the lot. Um that affects this property specifically. Um and that doesn't cause a substantial hardship um to the area. Um and that the little, the literal enforcement of provisions and ordinance would involve a substantial hardship uh to the applicant. And that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. And not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent and purpose of the ordinance. Here, um and again, I'm just gonna have you pop back up, um Caitlin, to the site plan. This property is very oddly shaped. Uh the larger portion is adjacent to High Street, um with a hundred sixteen feet of frontage. It shrinks all the way back with that jog to the west, to the rear, down to forty-three point um five feet. And so you can see, it's obviously very oddly shaped. Uh the surrounding properties, now if you can pop back down to the my maps, Caitlin. Keep you busy for this last one. Right, here we go. Uh the surrounding properties generally are um rectangular-ish shaped, certainly none as oddly shaped as this. And in this instance, the literal enforcement of the ordinance would require the applicant or any person. Wanting to employ a conforming use in the R three district. To remove a portion of the roof of the building in order to conform to the height requirements. So anybody that wants to come in and use this building in a conforming manner, from a use perspective. They would not meet the height requirements of the ordinance. Of course, this is a historic building and in a historic setting, further leading to the hardship in order to comply with the requirements. In fact, the DOD, of course, would prohibit the removal of the roof roof or to lower it, to comply with zoning. The oddity of this application of the ordinance, given the existing non-conforming use, which governs the existing non-conforming dimension requirements. Results in a substantial hardship for any owner of the building wanting to change the use when allowed R three use. And while there are a couple of uses in the R three that allow for a smaller area or frontage. Namely, a single-family home or a two-family home, and that's it. Those are not preferred in the goals of the city's master plan to create and preserve multifamily housing in the existing R three district. And of course, the height requirement for those are thirty-five feet. The unfortunate circumstance of the existing non-conforming dimensional requirements, the property literally will cause a hardship on this or any owner of the property. On the other hand, the granting of relief will be entirely consistent with the neighborhood. And will not derogate from the purpose and intent of the ordinance. First, this is the R three district. The proposal for multifamily housing is entirely consistent with the most dense housing district in the city, other than the Smart Grove District. And we're only talking about four units. We're not talking about anything more. Next, the surrounding neighborhood is largely made up of multifamily housing on much smaller lots. But for the adjacent lot to the rear, which runs on one oh four State Street. Otherwise, the two immediately adjacent structures on High Street are multifamily uh properties. And includes significantly smaller parcels with the same or smaller frontage on High Street. Indeed, one twenty-two High Street includes four units and has a lot area of six thousand six hundred ninety-three square feet. One twenty-six is a half-house condominium and includes two units on three thousand nine hundred and fifty square feet. And on one twenty-eight, the other attachment to that, that's to the left of this property, is two units on two thousand two, seven hundred and sixty square feet. We're proposing four units in the existing structure on sixteen thousand five hundred and seventy-one square feet. Finally, the proposed use would remove a pre-existing non-conforming use in exchange for a special permit conforming use. While it's true the dimensionals, the dimensions are not specifically as required in the ordinance. The proposed use with the existing dimensions are more in line with the R three than the non-conforming use. And are consistent with the surrounding properties. Therefore, it will not derogate from the intent and purpose of the ordinance and will not be substantially detrimental to uh the public good. In fact, the proposed use and resulting dimensions, which are the same that exist today and have for many years. Is the more conforming, less intense than five offices and two residential units that currently exist. It would actually be more advantageous to the neighborhood to approve the requested variances. To allow the property to be more aligned with the allowed uses in the R three district. And with that, we believe that the applicant meets the requirements for the variance, and we request the board grant the variance.
Thank you, Attorney Lee. Um would anybody who was here tonight as part of the public hearing would like to come and begin to make any comments? Okay, is there anyone out there? If there's anybody out there online. Who would like to uh comment, please press your raise the hand button at this time. See you then. Uh we'll take questions from the board. Who would like to begin?
I'll chime in. I just have a preliminary question. I just, I'm a little bit confused as to. What dimension, dimensional requirements the variance pertains to.
Sure.
Sure. At one point in the, in the papers or in the presentation, it seems to, it seems to suggest that there's lot area, height and frontage. But then there's another place where it talks about the right side setback. So I'm just confused about which one of, if all four are, okay, I'll let you go.
Yeah. So when I talked about the right side setback, that's related to the existing non-conforming use.
Okay.
So that's non-conforming. If we were to keep it non-conforming use, the mixed use. Three dimensional requirements. Lot area requires 20,000 for four units. We have 16,571. Lot frontage, 120 feet. We have 116.20. Height, 35 allowed. We have 36 and a half.
Got it. I will let any other board member continue with any other, with some other questions and I'll circle back around.
And who would like to go next? So maybe I'll say any question. I have no questions. But any questions, tell me if I have one. I think that last question cleared my question. I don't have any questions either. So we're back to you.
Okay, well, I do have another one. So can you just one of the things that you mentioned in your closing was the four units and the multifamily housing. And just to sort of understand, these are all going to be market units, right? There's no affordable component here. Okay. And then, so what would be the hardship then to the applicant if the variance were not granted? Because they could continue on with the non-conforming use, presumably, you know, renting out the the commercial spaces and selling the condos or whatever with regard to the residential space.
Right. So the hardship, so we believe the hardship is because in order to conform to the ordinance as opposed to continue with a pre-existing non-conforming use, any conformance with the ordinance, single-family, which is a by right use, single-family, two-family, four-family, we don't have the height. The height would have to be cut down. Obviously, it's too tall. And the, obviously, the frontage and lot area. So
Can I interrupt there for a second? Okay. So with that, those, the three dimensional requirements for which the variance would be required would be required with respect to a single-family home, a two-family?
No, the height would be required for everything.
Okay, height, okay, okay.
Right. So a single, you could do a single and you could do a two. But you couldn't do anything else.
But you would still need to get a variance for the height.
You'd need to get a variance for height.
Okay. Okay. Right. That's interesting. Okay.
And it's because of the non-conforming nature of it. So if it wasn't non-conforming for mixed use, which allows the height of 40 feet, right, in order for it to be conforming and bring it back, which is what, which is what the ordinance says, right? We want to get rid of non-conformities if we want them to be more conforming. This use is actually more conforming, but for those three dimensional requirements, which anybody's going to have a problem with the height. So while you, the ordinance, and that's why this is so unique, is that the ordinance wants it to be conforming for use, get rid of the non-conformities. And, but it can form to the dimensions, which you can't do. You can't have it both ways, right?
So, so that clears us of a couple of different hurdles with respect to other land, other landowners and accommodations for this landowner. Because this, the height here is unique to this property because no one else is, is this high in that, in this neighborhood.
Right. And it would apply to any landowner, any landowner of this property. This is not about this landowner.
No, no, understood. Yeah.
Yeah. So, and that's, that's the other, it would, would it be a substantial financial hardship for anybody? And the answer is yes.
Got it. Okay. Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions? All right, then we'll move to deliberations. And somebody like, who would like to begin? Please speak to the variance criteria.
I'll at least try and start. If I look at the first criteria, conditions and circumstances that are unique to the applicant's lot, structure or building, and do not apply to neighboring land, structures or buildings. I think the very fact that the building is already in excess of 35 feet fits that. And this is a circumstance or a condition that currently exists. Strict application of the provisions of this chapter is an exploit that would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of the lot, structure or building on a man equivalent to the use permitted to be made by other owners on neighboring land, structures or buildings. Again, I guess if we go to that with the building being 35 feet, we would, we would say you have to cut the building down to make it fit. That doesn't make sense to me as well. Seems to be an unreasonable requirement to put on property. The third one, the unique condition, and again, if I go to building height as a unique condition, I'm not the result of the applicant. You know, the pre-existing. The last one is relief will not constitute a grant of special privilege inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the district. Again, I don't, I don't think giving them this variance would do that. Those four bullets seem to apply to me because I look to the other members of the board here when they have the decision.
Yeah, like I'll just add to what, I think for me, the key point here as it relates to whether there's a substantial hardship for that goes to the question of changing this from a pre-existing non-conforming use to a conforming use, subject to a special permit. I think we, I think the ordinance encourages conforming uses. And once we take that as a point of departure, then the substantial hardships are clear relative to the lot configuration. The height of the building, it's significant that the notion that you would have to destroy the building or reduce it, but obviously is a substantial hardship. I also note that we're not making a decision here regarding whether whether the permit for the change of use is going to be granted. I take it that's the planning board, which again makes our decisions, at least for me, somewhat easier. If the planning board decides that that's inappropriate, that's their jurisdiction. And certainly to get towards the point of permitted use here, I certainly believe the requirements for a variance have been met.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. Mr. Scowall?
I guess I would add, and I would agree with all those that, you know, once you find a hardship, that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent and purpose of the ordinance. And I would, I would find that, that that criteria would be met.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would agree with everyone here on the board. And I think that, you know, especially with respect to the second thing that Mr. Bennet had noted, where we're talking about the hardship. I mean, there is in our ordinance X H6D, it talks about the literal enforcement of the requirement of this chapter pertaining to yards or other space relationships or total land area would result in exceptional practical difficulties or insecurities and undue exceptional and undue hardship upon the owner of such property. So I think the ordinance provides us with you know, with the ability to determine that this is in fact a hardship and based on Mr. Chagden and Mr. Bennet ticking off the other four criteria in C, I think I'm comfortable with this also.
For myself, I agree with a lot of what my colleagues have said. I would add a little, which is that you know, one of the things, we do not do a lot of variances. But one of the things we do look at is, is this an odd-shaped lot and is indeed an odd-shaped lot. So I would add that to the pile. And it's been discussed about having to chop off the top of the building. I think, I think a point was made on that by Attorney Meehan that with the DOD regulation, just unclear even if you could take off the top of the building. I think that's an important consideration as well. So for all those reasons, this is a variance that I couldn't support. So.
And Chair, there was one other special condition added in the staff report.
Oh, yes.
That, as we deliberate, I guess we want to make sure that the applicant's okay with that. It has to do with repairing the brick sideboard.
Yep, fourth one.
Because we would add that stipulation.
Find its way into the motion.
Yeah.
All right. Having said that, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move that the quest for variance for 124 High Street be approved.
You want to include the, you want me to read it, bring it over?
The stipulation. Special condition. The applicant shall reset or repair broken sidewalk bricks and granite curving in front of the property in accordance with the submitted site plan from the Department of Public Services dated 11/2023 and in accordance with the specifications provided by Department of Public Services. Reusing the existing onsite materials is acceptable for DPS. Said improvements shall be concluded prior to issuance of the final certificate of occupancy. In extenuating circumstances, including but not limited to the seasonal constraints, an alternative deadline for compliance herewith may be submitted to and approved at the sole discretion of the zoning administrator.
Thank you. I'm exhausted.
Thank you.
Couple more dashes. All right. So we have a motion. Would somebody like to second it?
I'll second it.
It's been seconded. So we'll call it all. Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Bennet?
Yeah.
The Shagman?
Yes.
The Scowall?
Yeah.
I two vote yes. Another five did not make vote. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We have two other requirements. Then it's the approval of our the number four, maybe. We'd be more better chances to see them if you might give it a go. And comments on the minutes?
One thing I've noted, at least maybe two years ago, they used to be like typos and grammatical errors. I don't think in these anymore. They must be going through an AI file or something. They're very well written, I guess, my comments. Right. It used to be fun trying to, you know, this, this could be grammatically cleaner, you know?
Right. No, it's, they're very good.
Very, they're very good.
So with that, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as submitted.
Prove it.
Prove, I'm sorry.
It's been seconded by Mr. Delisle. All the members just say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay. As far as other comments, I do have one thing I just want to hand out here, which is, I brought up at our last meeting that when we do get SPU proposals, I'd like some legal input. So Andy today asked me to write down the questions I would ask. And if you could just take and pass them down. Caitlin, the section requirements at the bottom of this page. Now, I just had three questions, basically. One is, you know, can we turn one down? Or because they've created this use to automatically go through? Because I've noticed in the requirements down here, we think the character of the street is going to be created, basically, if you turn it down. And I'm suspicious. So in question one, I'm basically asking, do we have the prerogative to turn one down? Number two, I'm saying if we do have the prerogative, it's on a, S U is on a very residential street. Is that reasonable grounds to turn it down? Because it affects the character. It's the only business on a residential street. So I just like some input here. And question three is, if you have an SPU that has S U complaints, let's say it's over, you know, a middle street where there's been some, where I last on, if, if that one comes in, even though it's a mixed street, if you will, with both businesses, the president's complaints, so. I would just like some legal basis from our, and when Andy asked me to write these down, I also, he also said it'd be good to not only hand it out, but if you guys have any things, you'd like an attorney to, if you'd like to add to the list, just send them in to, to Andy or here. And we'll get some, that's legal input before we get some new things.
So you have a third bullet, because we had this discussion with some neighbors, because we had one on ours.
Yeah.
How is a complaint filed and who, who listens to it?
Well, I'm just thinking if we have three or four letters come in here and say, this has been horrible and, you know, here's what they do. They're so hard to sell the time and.
Right. So, so that would be.
Complain with Jennifer? Is that how that works, Caitlin?
Do they file? I don't think many of them file complaints.
Like, I know, I know the one near us, there's been a police presence.
Well, those are, so.
So, so that, that should be publicly documented. I don't know if like the the zoning board or the zoning office would be aware of that.
Yeah, that's true.
So it'll, it'll all just be hearsay, I guess, is what I'm saying. People coming in, I think, were, were good. You know, if someone comes in and says.
Every time this happens, there are beer bottles broken all over the street.
I suspect that's what will happen.
Yeah, I suspect that's what will come.
That's probably our only leverage for what I would call complaint.
I think probably.
Okay. Anyway, I just didn't know if the planning office has a complaint board.
I think a lot of this will be known to the licensing commission. Today you get licensed for, they should have done that. But I think at your next meeting, we're going to have a agenda on your agenda to talk to the Twitter and address the questions that.
Yeah, I, I've really asked for legal input from our, our attorneys to this.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, the first one says you can't do it. It's a moot point.
Exactly. Well, I've heard somebody say that. Well, the city council is not allowed it, so you have to prove.
Yeah, I find, I find that hard to believe.
I do too, but.
They still haven't gotten rid of the board yet.
Part of the reason I'm asking.
Item number eight here. Propose uses in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance. I mean, that gives us wide berth to just make our own findings.
Oh, I think there seem to be city councils that don't think we have the choices. And I'd like to.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea to get this, but.
I'd like to get back a clarify that we have latitude. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
It's still adjourned.
Senator Faver?
All right.